What's this one for?
Who's this for?
I don't know, it's got red on top. It was on the title.
Yeah, yeah, I read it.
What's Alway?
I'm waiting for the red line.
We're on a radio station.
I'm waiting for the red line.
You're right.
I thought that was so.
All right, six forty.
I've been waiting for the red line.
You already have to get one.
Yes, I need it, I need it, I need it.
We're on a radio station. You're the lady of the people.
Yeah, I have my shirt there.
Not saying we clean it all down here, just we are.
Yeah, I see that money would go to support. Yes, sir, I never got the change.
I don't know, it's, it's, I'm big timey.
We already got people viewing this.
All right.
And the county commission is now checking for plant care.
Thank you. I'll leave them to order. Mr. Ronnie Hooper, would you give the prayer of thanks?
No, I won't pass on that.
Okay. Mr. Norman?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'm special to your father, we come to you tonight doing the county's business. We ask that you be with our members that are absent in health and day of work, Lord asks that you be with each and every commissioner as they do the county's business, as things ask in your son's precious name. Amen.
Please roll down with your leaders in place, please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sunny Hall. Phil Melton.
Here.
Doug Bickers.
Here.
Rochelle Hill.
Here.
Janet Peetton.
Here.
Roseanne Ward.
Here.
Darryl Pigs. Ronnie Hopper.
Here.
Mary Powers.
Here.
Angie Kern.
Here.
Don Patton.
Here.
Dana Ferguson.
Here.
Kenneth Miller.
Here.
Rocky Preston. Kalya Di.
Here.
Norman Fraser.
Here.
Gary Furd. Ford Plant.
Here.
Form three X.
Thank you. Have a quorum. Please announce to the Lincoln Pro team. Any nominations from the floor? nominate row man. Ms. Roseanne?
Second.
Second. Second. Mr. Bickers? Ms. Roseanne?
I don't know about, I don't know about Darryl if he still wants that position or not. I don't know, not looking at it.
Have a nomination for Mr. Darryl Higgs?
Yes.
Have a second?
Second.
Please second.
I think then.
Please second.
nominations first.
All in, yes, two one. Mr. Daniel, nomination of the seats, up there.
Second.
Let's get us a second. All in favor? I don't know, I care. What we're gonna do then is have a roll call, you call the name that you're for.
Do all frame?
Mr. Darryl Hooch and Roseanne. Just one or two, who called and called, let's see, beat the names, get both.
Sunny Hall.
Roll the left.
Phil Melton.
Ward.
Doug Bickers.
Ms. Ward.
Rochelle Hill.
Roseanne Ward.
Janet Peetton.
Pigs.
Roseanne Ward.
Press.
Ronnie Hopper.
Roseanne.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Angie Kern.
Ward.
Don Patton.
Bash.
Dana Ferguson.
Roseanne.
Kenneth Miller.
Roseanne.
Kalya Di.
Roseanne.
Norman Fraser.
Roseanne.
Ford Plant.
Roseanne.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Anyone pass want to change their vote? Yes, eleven Ward, I mean eleven Ward. And two Pigs. And two pass, right?
Ms. Ward, here the pro team.
Thank you.
Let's have a motion, put that in there.
She's motion.
I second. I second.
Second.
Hill.
Pro team.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye's having. Thank you. Lose a line out of seven, the citizens four. I have a. My face off by right here. Number six, approval of the agenda.
Motion.
Agenda. Need a motion?
Powers.
Ms. Powers.
Second by Kern.
Motion. Ms. Kern, seconds. All in, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I care. Have losers, I'm sorry, the nine out of seven, the citizen four. I have all. Officially, Ferrell, think that's right, Ferrell, would you like to come? And a friend, Ferrell?
Hello. Thank you for taking your time to listen to us. We came here to show our support for the plans to build within farmers market and the community improvements package that Lashley has proposed. We believe this would significantly improve the quality of life for residents in the area. We are relatively new to the area and have gotten a pretty good feel for the community. We feel a farmers market in particular would be a great improvement. Not only to brighten up the area where people first come into Camden from Johnsonville, but it would also give the community a place to come together, buy themselves goods, host events, enjoy the splush grab, and just bring the community together. We all have seen the way that people selling goods out of the back of their truck on the side of the road, and it would be great if you could get those folks together in a place to set up and give the community an opportunity to shop from everyone at once. We also feel that this would draw another crowd to the area to shop here and possibly even live here. Knowing that the community is putting an effort into quality of life improvements, it isn't just another retirement community. Before we moved to this area, we had a few things that we felt were necessary. Internet was our number one because we have always business. Also, number two, we were very used to local farmers markets and play markets where we would, where we came from. We did not have much, we don't have much for options in this area unfortunately. And number three was the cost of living and that we heavily on our decision to live here. We make do with the internet that we have for now and we travel for farmers markets and play markets. We got Huntington on Tuesdays and really surprised at the amount of people that show up there from all over, even from Camden, they drive all the way over there. We also drive to Nashville for the same thing. People from all over the state travel to see what even the communities have to offer and it would be great if we could get them to come here and see what we have to offer and showing up line communities that. We also think this would be a great bonus for the fair. Our first year here, we didn't know, didn't better, we went to tennis shoes and we were stuck and hooked. It would be really great to have a place to put that there and nobody have to worry about that. You don't have to bring your luggage just in case. And second, this, this year was looking a lot better. Any conclusion? We believe that this package could really improve quality of life for all the residents, increase traffic and tax revenue, which is very important. And it would help our local farmers and veterans, people like us as well. This would help our community get noticed and show what we've done for over a hundred and eighty years here, grow and make great food and treat everyone like family. And I can thank you guys for your time, we really love living here, so this would be really great.
Thank you. I'd like to say that at the holiday, we have that meeting every, every month up here and they are always there to represent, to find the news out. We need more people like y'all at here, what we do is great, thank you for your support. They've always been there to support of what we do up there, so they definitely involved in our county. Thank y'all very much. Lose us nine out of eight, Mr. Ford. Any commissioner like to speak on any issues that just happened? The topic.
I'd like to get it on record that I really would like to get a solid waste board maybe set up soon. It's been almost two, I've been over two months now since we had the last. We got this new recycling thing that will fix some starts, so we need, we need to be talking about that, the board needs to be talking about that.
Mike, would you like to say something more? You wanna hold it? Anything further, I'm sorry, Roseanne?
I, I, Hill, if district, I would like to speak to what Mr. Hopper was saying, with Mr. Hopper. Does the board get to decide how often they need? Can the county require them to need a little more often? I'm not sure what they're actually obliged to do or not.
Who's on the board?
Russell, Russell Keen is the chair. And just as with any, well, I don't wanna speak out of turn, go ahead and.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, Ms. Roseanne.
I don't know if anyone has been on the Loretta Lynn website or not, but it's really a good website and there is a part on there where people can come on there and make comments about visiting and what they like and all that, but what I'm leading up to is, there's been some comments on there about people that visited the Loretta Lynn Ranch and while they were there, they wanted to come on into Benton County and visit the Patsy Cline Memorial site. And there were some questions about that there wasn't any signs directing them how to get there. And so, my question is, who? Who could put up the signs? Would it be the state DOT, would it be the county? You know, who could we get to put up more signs directing people to the Patsy Cline Memorial site?
I've gone afraid to the roads up the temple, I don't see it here tonight, I'd say that may be something, the mayor needs to get a T dot, a possible sentence, so he can do something.
Yeah, it would be.
Well, I'll, I'll address them.
Well, we don't need to do that until we get Highway seventy fixed. That is the worst coming in to Benton County, that, that really makes our county look bad.
Any further discussion from commissioners? Will we move that up? Nothing further? That moves a line out of nine. It's time, Mr. County Mayor, his fraternity, finance, father, and ninety kids to spend.
I'll lead it off and of course, there's a lot to cover, just bear with me a little bit. First of all, you've got a few agenda items that's been added and I apologize for delaying that, but the rationale on the resolutions were, we were waiting on a community development block grant to get final before we actually offered the resolution. We probably could have prepared the resolutions in time to get into your packet, but unfortunately with people being out of town or out of the office, vacation day, whatever, it did delay it and I apologize for that. However, we were able to construct the resolutions in, in order to be prepared for our budget committee meeting and to have properly discussed that in advance. And I think by, by this time, most of y'all probably in, informed some way or another of the resolutions being here that will be offered under like any other business option. There are two resolutions, one of them is to commit to a bond resolution to fund our capital improvement project. I will say that we've already in some shape, form, or fashion have already addressed that particular item twice prior to tonight. When we passed the initial capital improvement plan and then when we went to purchase the properties that we will consider for our farmers market and city center. So, this isn't anything new, you've been, you've been briefed that it was coming, but now we've got the final peg or spoke in the wheel completed with the awarding of the community development block grant and I don't want to hold up progress. This is important that we move forward on this. How we move forward, I'm totally open to the commission's pace and recommendation on that, but I do believe it's important to move forward. As we heard from the, from the fairers in the audience and I know from my perspective and speaking all throughout the community, I've not run into one single person, and I, I've at least interviewed a hundred people that is against us moving forward. Now, people can talk about their districts, I've been to every one of their districts, I do believe the people of Benton County want to move forward and they see the, the good in this. However, this is what good debate and good discussion is about and good cooperation, and so I'm all for any recommendations or improvements to the process that we made. I'm reluctant to accept a no, I would rather have a counteroffer. I think no is, we only have to look back for sixty years and, and we see what no gives us. I think if we're gonna be productive and we're gonna move us forward and we're actually gonna consider not just our generation, but the next generations, I would, I would ask that if there's disagreements or if there's a counterproposal, just make the counterproposal, just make the counteridea, I'm totally open to that. This is an ongoing process and I'm, but I'm excited about bringing it forward, forward to y'all and let's get, let's get the ball rolling. So, talking about the value of a farmers market, I, I've been in discussion with the ag extension. I've included on your table an email from Mr. Justin Hargrove, who is in the process of either compiling more data from area communities that has a farmers market. But I think in everything that we read about the impact that it has on, first of all, quality of life in the community, but also the impact to the local farmer, it's very important. It is definitely beneficial to this community, I believe it's something that is a good face of Benton County. I, I think when people think of Benton County, we really don't think of agriculture, do we? We tend to think of the river purr or something of that nature. This puts agriculture front and center to highlight in our community. So, it's not just the farmers market, it's also an ag extension, office, civic center, and the fair grand is right there with it, the co-op, I just think it's a great place for agriculture and I believe it's a great endeavor for us to embark on. Talking about, you know, the solid waste board. As with any committees that we have, a lot of times the committee members should be driving the, the participation of the committees. Whether it be if you're a committee chairman, you should be soliciting the members of your community to prepare your agendas, also meeting times and that type. Now legislatively, you were set by schedule, but on these advisory boards or, or community oversight boards, a lot of times that is at the discretion of the chairman calling the meeting and they're not gonna call the meeting just to come up, they don't, y'all don't get paid for it. So, they're not gonna necessarily just call a meeting to be calling a meeting, a lot of times the members of that committee will drive, drive that function. And I can make a request to Mr. Keen to meet, solid waste is very important in this county. I will say that as we saw last month, I think we proposed a recycling resolution and I think that might have been putting the cart before the horse. I've discussed with several members of the solid waste committee about how to approach that in a more effective, more efficient means for, for the body, for this legislative body to consider. But I'll get with Chairman Keen and ask him to get, with the committee members to hold a, hold a solid waste board meeting very soon. Loretta Lynn, excellent, excellent suggestion. I guess if you're gonna see Loretta Lynn, it's natural that people are gonna wanna see Patsy Cline too, and we, we need to have that on the website as well, connecting to Loretta Lynn and maybe we can ask Loretta Lynn to connect to the Patsy Cline site via online. But as far as signage, most of that will either be funded through a chamber of commerce or through a department of tourism. T dot just will, will install, okay? But I'll reach out to the department of tourism, I was just in contact with them today, I'll really go back out to them to see if they can have some signage made. But tonight you're gonna have one of your resolutions from our property sale that we're gonna start allocating the monies back into some county buildings. I have no problem, we're taking some of that monies, having us some signage made on our own, on our own dollar. Because that's good for tourism, tourism drives sales taxes, hotel, motel taxes, and economically is beneficial for that, that's an excellent point, I'm glad you brought that up and we'll work on getting some signage.
Clear how that connected with Google, I think most people use app now to find anything, what do you do to put that on, or is it?
Well, I, I'm gonna consider that, that most people who are going on vacation and haven't been here for the first time or whatever, they're, they're gonna check us out, they're gonna go to the Loretta Lynn site, they're gonna find this, be that means if you're driving.
They call the chamber, and you just Google it.
But we have it on I forty, but we really don't have signage on Highway seventy, so that, you know, we do, I know it, I know.
That's a terrible one.
But hey, this farmers market city center also improves that entry.
That's been done years ago.
And we're working on the Highway seventy, I don't know if I gave you that email or not, I think I passed it on to several of the members, I know Buck Carter's got it about. TDA is working with T dot and the engineering to get that expedited and to get that project moving to this level. Also, we have invited our county engineer, Mr. Alter Heffco, or the architect involved with some of these projects, Mr. Anthony Fuller, who's a, who's a, I consider a Benton County boy. Ultimately, if you've got some questions and concerns about the project itself, here they are to answer any questions, put your mind at ease and kinda give you a little bit more insight into that project.
Let me, I assume it's probably going to, some of the.
Will you go ahead to another subject? I wanted to add something to Commissioner Ward's statement about Patsy Cline. I had several people who were coming through like from Memphis and Knoxville and even from another state, and they stopped by my store and they said their next stop was gonna be the Patsy Cline site. And so, I had no clue, you know, where it was. And so, you know, we had to give them directions and so, you know, we need to, I agree that we need some little flashlights on that.
It has a tremendous amount of upside potential, we need to be marketing it better. I don't know if anyone has seen the PBS special and country music recently, but I talked to the department of tourism two times on this and they say get ready because the visitors are coming. They, they, they've watched that particular program, they're gonna put it on Netflix, they're gonna go international with it, and I don't believe we're very well prepared for those visitors. On this resolution, I believe it's number six, where we are allocating a lot of monies back into property, reinvesting that back. We have actually directed some of these funds directly towards that's gonna be, be put into the Patsy Cline park. We have got to upgrade that park, we've got to get better drainage, we've gotta get electricity to the kiosk, and as Commissioner Ward pointed out, we need signage. But this particular resolution will probably give us some additional funds in our pocket to do that, but.
Well, when they have, I, I just thought in my mind, you know, I hate it that they're, they're gonna be disappointed.
Well, on the contrary to that, I just had a, a group come in from, they did this filming, this Bethel fishing and make me a star video, a film for the outdoors channel, they spent three days in Benton County fishing. And the lady who was in charge of that said that they spent seven hours in Benton County touring sites and Patsy Cline is one of their favorites, I mean that, you know, so I, I kinda wiped the sweat off my forehead a little bit saying, it's gonna get better. But if they found approval in that, I, I just believe, I've been there and expected it, I do believe it can get much better as part presentation and again, but we've got to fund it and we haven't been funding it in the past. The budget this year included park upgrades for the county vault park, but we didn't really dedicate enough to Patsy Cline. One of these line items up here is gonna be dedicated solely for the Patsy Cline park. But signage is important, I did not consider that for my show.
Thank you, Mr. Bickers?
There was a, a nationwide movie that was on last night, the little Patsy Cline, nationwide. So, a lifetime of that, where my wife and daughters have watched it four times.
Well, when you put Google Patsy Cline, you really got to come up with a word, and when you come up with Google Camden Tennessee, it doesn't even tell that.
Well, we can work on that.
Mike, would you like to, I guess, the engineer, try to make, make.
Yeah, I would like to recognize our, again, our engineer and our architect. We will get to the resolutions and I feel like they'll probably draw a lot more, you know, questions and concerns that we can direct forth them, but I'll, I'll give you the floor if you wanna say anything.
Al, just, I don't know how you wanna do this, what pen you wanna use, or what, what time you wanna do that, but maybe we could explain this for a little bit about some of the things that are part of the back.
Would you like to do that now, wait till we can tell the, uh, serve of the will of the commission? I would say so that they can get their question ready, it's probably better that you present it now and let them ponder their questions throughout, throughout the meeting.
Most usually, that's Mr. Al, Mr. Al Keaton, he's been engineer for several years and Mr. Ford is waiting, he's the other engineer.
I would love this to be presented to the citizens of Benton County from their input.
We're, we're right here live on Facebook.
And they cannot put their input into the.
This will be no, this thing will be used, retained until the end, this is all gonna be carried over for another, some time. Go ahead, Mr. Al.
Okay, thank you. I think Brett does it, Anthony grew up here in Camden, and I guess I'm a foreigner because I grew up in New Johnsonville, so it didn't introduce me as being from New Johnsonville, I guess maybe it's driving me into. Go tiger. Sorry. I'm sorry, but I think each of your hands on your table in front of you, something that with the cover looks like this, it's got a lot of sheets behind it. This is a sort of a follow along, this is the culmination of, golly, it's been a year's worth of work. Let me, let me tell you a little bit about the process before we go into many of the details, and I don't, I don't wanna take a lot of time because I know everybody's anxious to get on around it. Before, before we can proceed with the implementation of any sort of capital improvements, one of the things that's important to the four of us, Chairman Plant, County Mayor Lashley, me and Anthony, was that we have a mechanism paper there. We ensure that we do something that doesn't necessarily pass us, pass the sort of undue burden on the taxpayers. I've heard that over and over and over and over again, you know, we don't wanna do anything that puts an additional burden on the taxpayers. So, what we've tried to do is develop a plan where we can implement most of these improvements and capitalize on the number of things that are available to us. and capitalize on the number of things that are available to us. One, there's a major bond issue that retires in about two years. And when that bond is retired, it's going to mean significant, a lower expenses for Benton County. There are new revenue sources that the county mayor is, is working on to provide. The other thing that we've been working on during that period of time are accessing grant funds. And as I think either the mayor or Ward were talking about before, we've congratulated Benton County. We applied for and received a grant through the Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development. It's called the Community Development Block Grant Program. We've also been working with, as Brett talked about, we've been working with tourism, State Department of Tourism. We've been working with the Tennessee Department of Transportation. We've been working with the, actually, the Tennessee Department of Department of Conservation Bureau of Parks that has grant funds available too. We've got pretty, some pretty significant interest, obviously, and even to some point pledges for support in the form of grant money. So I, we'll get into that in just a second. It seems like everybody's really excited first and foremost about the, the farmer's market. And again, it's not just the farmer's market. Somebody pointed out earlier, I mean, Mr. Ferguson, it might have been you, that this is really a gateway into Camden from anything coming from the east towards the west. As you know, right now, the property that we're talking about is where the Ford Lockhart Motor Company was. If you look at this ground, just to give you some perspective, that's Highway 70. My mother-in-law didn't think she can live a week if she doesn't go to the country and western. The big country and western flow over here. And then, of course, the fairgrounds is, is back here on this side. The old, the actual old Ford building is this one here. You can see it. Again, all of these are on the sheet that you got. And they're all sorts labeled. The, the overall plan, and believe me, the more people have learned about this, we're getting input on what we need to do here at a much accelerated rate. Everybody really seems to be really excited about this. If it keeps going the way that it is, this thing by itself may cost a hundred billion dollars. People are too bad on to it. So we need to slow our roll just a little bit on that. But one of the things we want to do, basically four different components. One is the old building itself. We want to, we want to renovate and convert to an ag and civic center. One of the things that we're looking at is a, is a converting an area or building a new area where we could have venues there. You could have high school graduations. You can have bluegrass or country music venues. You can host events. You can have beauty pageants. You can do all sorts of things there. But it is usually a central point to be able to do that from. Obviously, the farmer's market, basically, I should let you stand up and give your speech again. That was outstanding. Thank you for the introduction. But everything that she said, it applies. But again, if you, if you look, and this, we, Anthony and his family have developed some new renderings for what the facility can look like. We've already gotten modifications to that. But as Brett said, there's a, there's a significant opportunity to generate new income, new revenue, not only just from sales of items that occur here, but the people that come into town, as you, as she said about people that come into town for one thing, but they may spend the money at local restaurants or gas stations or, or markets or stores. So there's different sources of revenue for that. The third thing is that existing, the old commercial facility there that's been abandoned for years. I don't think there's been anything in it for another years. What we'd like to do is convert that to a facility that we can use. Right now, when, I think everybody in this building or this group anyway knows about commodities that are made available to, to people who actually very much need them. But it's difficult to access and the parking accessibility is not only, it's a, it's sort of hazardous. But one of the things that we wanted to do is have a facility here where we could, the commodities could be delivered and people could, could have parking facilities and easy access and safe ingress and egress of it to be able, to be able to do those. We also wanted to construct this area where we have public restrooms for, for both the farmer's market and again, the Ford that we had. And then there'd be other, the other component of facilities. There could be a community room or there could be other governmental offices that could be located there. We're still in the, in the stages of fleshing that out. We want to make it available. The fourth thing, which happened not that immediately, when the public became aware of what the playground looked like, I think it was in the paper last week, and all of a sudden it started getting flooded with, oh, we need this, we got to do that. One of the big things that worked consistently over and over and over again was splash pads. And there have been splash pads in communities. Last week, Brett and I had a meeting with representatives from the Tennessee Department of Transportation. There may actually be grant funds that would help us offset some of the costs for the construction of splash pad. But that's another drop. It's a draw from areas all the way around here. And it can be multi-use, multipurpose. And then, you know, people could come into farmer's market and then take their kids somewhere to eat or to buy different things, use the splash pad. And again, this would truly be a one-stop shop. And not to mention a significant improvement to the aesthetic appearance of, of that particular piece of land. We have other, also have other long-term plans for that that will provide interconnectivity to the rest of town through greenways and trails and sidewalk programs. Yes, sir, Mr. Parker?
Oh, I'm kind of simple there, but what's a splash pad?
It's a, it's a swimming, it's a, it's a swimming pool where you don't actually get underwater. It's a, it's a, you've seen those, the playground areas like at McDonald's where the kids play on. It's got that material, that surface where if they fall down, they don't hurt themselves. It's sort of like that. And you've got fountains that spray up and blue and brush moons and things like that. Always another thing where they, they enjoy playing on. Yeah, I don't know how many, have anybody in this room been to Biscayne and Moll in Nashville? Were there farmer's market? Have you seen the, we did that. That was one of our projects, that the fountains there at, at in front of farmer's market that integrate to Biscayne and Moll. That was one of our projects. And believe me, man, I didn't realize this. We, we started into that project doing one thing. And then we figured out that Metro Nashville, that's actually not an exhibit or a landscape feature. That's a swimming pool now. Because all of the kids and adults, most of us older, actually use that thing a lot as sort of a swimming pool in here. So we had to completely retool and figure like a swimming pool instead of just a landscape feature. So again, if anybody has any questions, I'm glad to stop, especially with Anthony here and answer that. But we'll go, there are, there are other projects, other critical projects that are included in this package. The next one, the one that we got the community to develop a block grant for is a new E-911 EMA building. How many of you have been to the existing E-911 EMA building? When we were down there, you know, it's, it's also jointly used by, by the nursing program. They, they bring nurses in and help train them on different things, different practices. I don't know if you're a, anyway, while we were there and we were walking through the building, doing our inspection and kind of getting measurements and trying to find out what the use was, we walked into the utility closet and I said, there's something wrong here. They had a gas leak, which is not the first time they've had a gas leak. They had to shut the facility down. They had to dismiss the nurses. There were people in there with headaches and dizziness and everything else. And that happens somewhat frequently. It's, it's, it is a, it's a nightmare. It doesn't meet any ADA codes. It's a code, it has so many code violations, you couldn't, you couldn't list them all. And plus, I don't know how many people know this, but the Benton County EMA E-911 is the hazardous response team for a seven county region. Well, they can't even keep the hazardous response materials at that site. They have to leave there, dispatch over, go hook them up at, at a remote location, and then go out to respond to calls, which is, which is sort of, doesn't make a lot of sense. Well, you, you have the proposed, again, this is all preliminary. None of this stuff is carved in stone. But what we've tried to do is create a venue where E-911 and EMA, a big sort of showplace for everybody else in the, in this region, in the Northwest Tennessee Development District Service Area. We pull through garages where they can store all their equipment, all their hazardous waste response, all their other response equipment, marine or land. And they have immediate access to it. They get a call, they go into, they go into the storage facility, pull out their, turn out gear, they have all their materials and equipment right there. And in two minutes, they're out to go and respond. So again, none of, none of the floor plans that you see in front of you are final additions. These are just very preliminary. So that we could have some idea about an approximate cost. We've been working with Richard and Justin on putting all this together and trying to holler to get at all the components. So again, we've got that money to do that. The, the rest of the money would come from the EMA fund and out of this bond issue that's being proposed. The third thing is the jail. There are some modifications to the jail that, that need to be made. Right now, the sheriff can't really protect you. I don't even know, in town a lot of times, just a place to notice and store dollars. And again, anybody can walk through there and have access to anything. It's a little, not a little bit, probably a significant monitoring distance for you because those people use that area for things that they shouldn't use it for. And it could create a little bit of havoc, certainly to the folks that are there at the facility. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to fence that in and make it an organized controlled access facility. The, the city exchanged land with Camden some time ago. And the mayor was able to recently purchase a adjacent tract of land. Couldn't believe the price that he was able to give it for. But we're going to clear that and level that. A lot of the stuff, the sheriff has, there's more anything else. It's surplus equipment. Sometimes it's in the way. What we want to do is create a, a landing area for all of that equipment to go back on the backside of the property. So the area that's up front and flat and usable space, you can use for other more meaningful things. And then there's some interior floor plan that we're doing some modifications on. And right now, the salad board, if you go out there and look, you see, you see tire marks on the curbs and, and marks on the, on the bars where, where people are, I don't want to call prisoners, but they're, they're bringing folks in to drop them off. They can't get in. They can't make the turn. They can't pull through and they can't hardly get out. And it's, it's extremely difficult and unnecessarily so. So we're going to modify the entrance and exit from the salad board to make it a lot more accessible and a lot more easy to get out without them having to maneuver around several times or bump and bang into things to be able to do all that. And the, the last two things are sort of tied together. Yup, this purchase, the old Benton County electric building. I like the new Benton County electric building a lot of lies, but really, really, really nice structure. We're not going to make it look like that. But it is going to be a functional service area. What, what we're trying to do is, because parking sometimes around the courthouse is kind of difficult. And you've got people in the courthouse constantly trying to either pay the property tax or, or pay a parking ticket or, or pay different fees for here and there. So what we're trying to do is move anybody that handles money or takes in money on behalf of the county. We're trying to work at them. We're going to renovate that building. And we're going to give them a place where all of them will be together. So anybody that needs to pay whatever they got to pay for the county has one place to go. And, and it's equipped with a drive-through. So if it's bad weather or, or people just don't want to get out of vehicles, you know, that, that already had a drive-through feature, which is what we have to drive, be able to drive through there and pay their, pay their bills, pay their fees, pay their taxes, whatever they're going to do. Once we get that done and all of the, I don't want to call them money handlers that has a negative biblical, I guess, perspective. Once we get everybody moved out, then we're going to renovate the courthouse, which I think is forty, is it forty-five years old? Forty years, forty-five, forty-five years old.
Seventy-two.
Wow. Thank you.
Well, they passed it, they started construction in seventy-two and moved in September.
So the building itself and the occupancy is forty-five years old. There are a number of issues with the configuration and layout and accessibility. And I know it's supposed to be handicap accessible, but there's a number of issues relating to actual handicap access. And we want to be able to fix all of that. And we'd like to create a venue there where you can have, you know, all, you can have litigation. You know, right now, people are crowded around and hanging out all over the courthouse when you have court in session. They're, they're going into different offices and things like that. It's sort of a major disruption. We, we want to make a, a nice venue, a nice venue that's accessible, it's controlled, that has good ingress and egress, is ideally accessible. But for example, when you have people, some of the things that we're working on right now is, is TBA. When an industry wants to come to the state of Tennessee, there's two entities that are involved in them coming here. The Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development and TBA. Those are the two entities that recruit and submit and give proposals back to these industries for locating here. They also are responsible for helping, helping counties identify potential industrial sites and helping get ready for industrial development. Well, up to this point, anytime we have somebody come in, we always go out there to Duck River, I mean, I'm sorry, Benton County Electric, to their, to their facility. Because it's nice and it creates, you know, a sort of a, an impression that, that we want, we want people to be impressed with Benton County. You bring them here to the courthouse, I mean, it's like putting a big red X in a, in a box for them. They don't like that. So we want to, we want to create a venue here that you can be proud of and you can bring people into, that, that, it's functional, it's efficient, it's ADA compliant, and it can be used for economic industrial development and other, other activities. So I've gone through the whole thing. I've taken a lot of time to get into it. I apologize for all that. But I'll answer any questions. Are we going to do that now?
Well, we can do, we can do one of those, the actual resolution. Maybe you've got time to ponder some questions.
Maybe the most important thing, and I did, the thing I didn't mention, is because we want absolutely full disclosure. The very back sheet looks like this. It's a spreadsheet. It shows the cost for each one of these on the left-hand side. Got it all broken down. And on the right-hand side, it shows the methodology for funding. So anybody, I'll give you a chance to study that. Like Brett said, when we come back to that, we can talk in more detail back.
And I'll just, I'll, I'll just add to this is that, like you said, this is really six projects. You know, financing mechanism is one part. The construction mechanism is another part. And when it comes to, we still got several months of prior, we, we won't even have a bond issuance for several, several months. We will not start, I guess we'd say, breaking ground on these projects for several, several months, six months. You know, the spring weather's very important. But it gives, it gives us plenty of time to discuss this as to how we want to build it. Now, when it comes to public input, I agree with what Commissioner Ferguson stated. This is something we need to include the public in. I will say, I started this one year ago. Y'all remember, one year ago, October, we began embarking on this. I believe I've probably been the most open, forthright, honest, transparent county mayor that you probably had to be able to bring ideas to you. that you probably had to be able to bring ideas to you, bring concepts, how we're gonna pay. But you know what? In the end, I'm totally agreeable with whatever productive elements that we can bring to the table. And when it comes to public input, when we commit to this, hopefully tonight, we're committed, the projects turn over to the property committee a lot. The property committee will be very hands-on in this project going forward. And they will entertain the formation of teams of multiple components and stakeholders to get everybody's input. Now, when it comes to the money part, that's what you hire me for as your county mayor. I'm the chief financial officer of the county. It is my duty to put together the best financial package for you. However, when we talk about stakeholders, when we go to the jail, I want the sheriff, Ben, the prime stakeholder, he knows what he needs in his jail. But, you know, they know how they need that design. When it comes to the courthouse, we will bring the judicial element here to get their way in, to get their ideas, to get their suggestion of what they need to function, also from the sheriff's perspective, because he also has a mission here on court days. When it comes to the courthouse annex, we're gonna get the registers, the trustees, the clerks, the assessor's office, all on board to provide that input as to what their needs are. We've actually been doing that over the past year, getting everybody. We've put together a very good preliminary plan. But you know what? If you can improve it, if we can add to it, you may, you may want a five-hundred-seat civic center and not a two-hundred-seat civic center. We're completely, again, I turn that over to the commission to come up with those ideas and that design and that way in on that. So, the public discussion begins tonight, hopefully. And I'm excited about it. I truly believe this is the best thing in moving us forward. You know, I ran on vision. I think we, as a body, need to be the ones that drive the vision. But, again, it's, this is a good time. This is an exciting time for this county to move forward, considering the last project we really did was forty-five years ago. And I've always made the comment that if we're making decisions based upon today or our generation, I look at our age group, we're already behind. We're already behind. If we make, if we make a decision for a seventy-five-year-old person, in essence, we're neglecting a decision for a twenty-five-year-old person. This particular project addresses the needs of today as well as tomorrow. Just to give you a couple of numbers quickly. Financially, compared to last year, September thirtieth, we are already up one hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars in property tax. That's a sign of a positive economy. Compared to September thirtieth, we are up ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-five cents in sales tax compared to the same time last year. Our economy is growing, our economy is healthy. Interest rates are at all-time low for our lifetime when it comes to going and going to the bond market with this. So, I believe, as a body, I would humbly appreciate your support of this project. I believe it's good for Benton County, but ultimately, the decision rests in your hands.
Sheriff. Sheriff, but you had to ask me earlier to speak, but you had to then bring it up for the business.
Right up by the business because this is, while we're talking about this, I don't wanna interrupt you.
Anybody vote, Mike? Not to vote is nine out of ten. Turn around the minutes, motion.
Motion by Hearn.
Motion by Hearn, second of Dana. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye, it's known by two. Nine out of eleven, reported the flibbered utility.
Motion by Hearn.
Motion by Hearn, second of Miss Dana. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, have it, no. Resolution, nine out of twelve, resolution to appoint Jenny Higgins to the insurance committee and appoint Doug Victor to the law enforcement committee to fill bankruptcy due to the recent resignation of Phil Keating.
Motion by Hearn.
Motion by Hearn. Second of. Second of Miss Higgins. Any discussion? No discussion?
Yeah, I'll get it. Some of this money should be going back into the general fund, shouldn't it?
We're on resolution one.
True, nine out of, we're reporting the positions right now.
Turn that, we're on one, not seven.
There's nobody in this.
All right, this mayor doesn't seem to make that here.
I do it all the time. So, I have a motion by.
One.
Clear as eyes, no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no doubt has it. Nine out of thirteen, resolution to appoint Miss Angela Jones to the Benton County Board of Animal Shelter for a period of four-year term since it expired October thirty-one, twenty-three.
Motion by Hearn.
Motion by Hearn. Second of Mr. Patton. Any discussions? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, have it, no. Let's see, Miss Higgins. Nine out of fourteen, resolution to budget to R O I fee received in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-five within the county quarter. Matter of fact, I'm a budget to help reimburse their out-of-pocket expense. Is a motion?
Motion by Hearn.
Motion by Hearn.
Second, Powers.
Second of Miss Powers. Discussions?
Page on three.
If no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Fifteen is a resolution, voiced by the county mayor, whereas in the fiscal year, we were experiencing, being a leak, it's been a leak year called by the Saffron County Department for having twenty-six days to twenty-seven day period.
We're on resolution forward.
We're on fifteen, what you're looking at.
Nine out of, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
The one that would have had its left dial.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Nine out of fifteen, resolution to budget the funds and the receiving to help activity bill environmental grant in the amount of twenty thousand within the fund limit of one seventy-one, general capital project. All in favor?
Motion by Hearn.
Second? Of Mr. Hoffman? Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sixteen, nine out of sixteen, resolution to budget total received from the active health environment grant in the amount of twenty thousand.
You're accepted.
Well, I just got that, take up my.
I think they're fine with this.
Yeah, they are listed, my bet is they're good. Sixteen, resolution to give funds and receive with the U S D A grant in the amount of twelve thousand to reimburse the county for patrol vehicles.
Motion by Hearn.
Motion by Hearn, second. Second by Higgins. Miss Higgins, Miss Higgins, any discussion?
Yes. I'm confused because is this to purchase a new vehicle? Is this a grant to purchase a new vehicle?
It is a, it is a grant reimbursement of the vehicle we have already purchased.
Then shouldn't this go back into the general fund since we purchased twelve vehicles already?
Where is that?
That motion.
I'm asking a question. She's asking a question.
Yeah, it's not going to be.
I'm not getting a motion.
If you want to.
Can't make a motion yet.
To go to the general fund, or if you want to apply this towards the future purchase of vehicles, you can do either way. The way it is right now, it goes into the capital projects fund where we drew the original funds from. But basically, what it will do is we'll create a twelve-thousand-dollar balance that we can carry on to the purchase of future vehicles, or you can pull it through the general fund. If you wanna pull it through the general fund, just make an amendment for that.
Then I make amendment to the general fund as regards to this.
Second?
Yeah.
Want you to make, or to the general fund, where you want it to go?
I think budget discussed as setting up an account, moving it back in there so we can have the funds, so we're not hit all at once for the purchase of new vehicles. That's the reason why we allocated it to that. So, we're not hit with the big lump sum like we were in the past, ain't we?
So, will this stay there until it is bought? Or is it going to be moved again to do something else?
It should remain there until new vehicles are purchased again as a present.
What she's asking, it will take the money from the commission and move that money in. If the sheriff just came, come to it, here's line out of my form, she's getting that. Is that right, Mr. Person?
Yeah.
Right. It would require.
Okay.
So, you like to draw your amendment for sure. It was wrong, okay, all right. We're back online with it?
I tried to catch you.
Back to the reason. Motion, have a discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, wait, wait. The motion, as it is, the movement is.
She withdrew.
She withdrew her amendment.
She's not gonna amend it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who knows, I have it. Nine out of seventeen, resolution to budget funds in Benton County property sales in the amount of ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars.
All right, motion. Frasier?
Motion by Frasier.
Second.
Second of Helen Dye.
Check number again.
Any discussion?
Discuss, I think ninety-one about. Ninety-one.
Ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three.
Discussion? Frasier. Mayor, you made a comment about the taxi crime and moral coming into play on this. Would that come under the other facilities and land that we've had kind of a blend of opportunities to use it? The nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, that particular amount will be what, will put into the park repairs. But it goes to parks. How much we dedicate to taxi crime is subjective. But that's where, that's basically going back to the ballpark or to the taxi crime.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, I hear it, no.
And I'll just interject one thing on that. That twenty-five thousand for the purchase of land, that is for that additional property at the sheriff's office. For that particular item, the sheriff.
Resolution, nine out of eighteen, resolution budget funds in the amount of seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine, ninety cents within the sheriff's office. Have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion. Second of Miss Hearn, discussion?
Discussion.
Miss Rochelle?
Rochelle's property.
What did, she had her hand up first right there. Rochelle, I get you there.
I'll go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Miss Rochelle.
Last month, the sheriff had to withdraw his resolution to budget funds, and this month, we have another resolution to budget funds. The only funds he's asking to have put back into his budget are funds that are money being given the sheriff's office to replace money spent, tow bills, reimbursed medical expenses, damages. I know some people think that these should all go back into the general fund, but certain things, if they're not reimbursed, are going to leave those line items completely empty and unable to fund shift.
I think some I mentioned, there was nobody in the insurance meeting to vouch for what this was. What is the other? What's, when you say other, what?
Okay, one of them is the school resource officer money, and I believe that's what Commissioner Miller objected to. But some of these are tow bills. We have two thousand dollars in the tow bill line.
Yeah, I see that. But then you've got the six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four in the other.
I don't see.
There's a question, Rochelle, I hope you know what this is. And I'm gonna carry these.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, these two items, one twenty-two are drug money. Those have to go back into drug.
Well, that should say drug, what I'm saying, that's, we don't say that.
Well, it says one twenty-two. That is the drug fund. That's what one twenty-two stands for, is the dedicated drug reserve. So, one twenty-two damages recovered from individuals is drug monies that were awarded to the sheriff's office through the Department of Safety Court. One twenty-two sale of property are drug vehicles that were disposed of after being awarded to the sheriff's office. Those funds have to go back into one twenty-two, which is the sheriff's drug account. And so, he's put them in five ninety-nine other charges. The other items miscellaneous refunds are tow bills. We spent money on a tow bill. The person came, got their vehicle, reimbursed us what we had to pay for the tow bill. We need that money to go back into tow bills when we were one out of money to do tow bills. And the other sex offender registration fund has to go back into sex offender because the state mandates it.
Here's a problem.
Yes, sir.
There's nobody in the law enforcement meeting to endorse where this goes. The sheriff will not tell you or not that.
Yes, sir.
And this sounds a problem. When they there meeting, they don't know. So, if a question comes up, that's why, it's very important. I ask y'all please to attend these meetings because it's set up for information to understand what to be done when you come here. We've had that, it's probably marked on sheets, to know in the world we're actually supporting. I encourage each chairman, each committee, to make sure you play a part in your committees at these meetings because it's vital that we have that information. The sheriff, if you can't be there, please send your chief deputy or somebody. But we have no way of understanding this. And I'm, I'm just saying, I'm speaking for the commissioners that's in the committees.
I understand, and there's no way that can be avoided, yeah, no.
I'm sure there, but you know, Miss Rochelle never showed up, and nobody.
Well, I was at the budget meeting the following night, sir, but I'm afraid there was not enough commissioners there to hold a budget meeting, so we were, we were, again, unable to discuss that.
Well, they come up with a law enforcement.
Also, budgets, sir.
The drug monies have received.
Let me, let me get back in order.
Go ahead, let y'all go.
Okay, go ahead, go.
The drug monies that were received were ordered by the court from an individual, and the sex offender registry is set by law. Therefore, those things are going to stay, the sale of property in the drug, drug one twenty-two fund is also gonna stay in the drug fund. That money has been placed back into the charges of drug plant. The only thing that I see that's pretty questionable is the seller, excuse me, is the miscellaneous refunds that's not part of the one twenty-two. And that, I think, is part of the category going back into the general fund because it was recovered from an individual that, where they paid that.
That's the one seventy-five.
One hundred and seventy-five. The others, I think, should stay where they are as far as whatever drug number.
I'd like to make a motion to remove. I'd like to make a motion to remove the one seventy-five and allocate it back to the general fund.
Second, I have a motion to, Ben, to remove the one seventy-five. I have a second of Miss Dana. Any further discussion?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
My back to shit. That's what Rochelle was trying to explain on that. We're only allowed so much money for the year for tow bill. We pay it out when people come back and reimburse us for the tow bill when they pick it up. All we're doing is putting money back in the same place. If we don't, we're gonna run out of money in about three months. We're just rolling the money back over, going right back into the same place. If we don't, we don't have enough money to make it through three, four months.
Budget committee made very clear that we were not going to allocate money back to them. We're gonna give them what they. We're going to give them what they asked for, we give them that.
What we discussed on that, Sheriff, was any game money, not refunded money. We're giving American bank as forward money that's coming in, but money that, where we're just refunding our, our tow bill is what we're doing. If we don't, we're going to be up here asking for money because we can't, you only got a couple of thousand dollars in there. All we're doing is turning back over as the tow bills come around, and that's what we lost, sir. The generated money that we have, were, it comes in from the phone services and all that. We're giving all that back to the county. We used to give half of it back, now we're giving it all back. We're just, these are things that we discussed this, that this would come back, it's reoccurring money, it's money that, we're not generating money. We're just refunding our own budget line item.
What do you have in your budget on your record service? Are you falling out like fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars?
It's two thousand. So that only holds us probably on the average of three to four months. And if we don't put this money back in there, it's just, all we're doing is refunding that same. And at the end of the year, we'll, we'll be right back with that.
As you were asking, two thousand dollars to be funded, if two thousand dollars will be, expectations that money as it came back in, we go back into the general fund. Now, you have other areas to budget for, if you possibly could really sign limits around the end of that, until we get further along in the year where we might have to look at budget funds in the.
Either way, we're going to have to refund it. It's not going to hold up. This way, we're keeping record of it. It just comes right back to where it come from. It's all we're doing. There's no gain anywhere in it. It just comes right back to where it was. And that's what we bring on the table.
We're talking.
Yeah, the way I see it is that the sheriff funded this, all this stuff, just from his budget, and all that money is going right back into his budget because he's not sure.
I have a motion, second by the commissioner, to amend what he's doing for a hundred seventy-five dollars. I'm going to follow through what their wishes are, and this is something they are now. So the budget committee, back with it, have the, have the chapters here.
Just a comment, really, from not the lawyer's side, but my former accounting side. For forecasting and budgeting in the future, it doesn't matter however everyone wants to do it, it's the commission to decide. But if you use numbers for forecasting for the future, and say there's two thousand dollars this year, and the commission said if we funded two thousand dollars, that's all we're going to fund you next year because that's all you needed. When in reality, the sheriff's department actually spent more than two thousand dollars, they would just reroll the money back in there. They really spent four thousand, they would just reroll back in. It could affect the forecasting for the budgets for the next year. I, I know there's, you don't want to come back and ask for money later in the year, but for forecasting, if you don't properly, you need to know the actual number of like tow bills or whatever. So the next year, you can put the proper amount in there to stop you from coming back for more money the next year. That's typically how forecasting is done for budgeting. Now, I'm not involved in any of the budgeting for this county whatsoever, but when I was involved in accounting before.
Yeah, I think that's kind of what they want to do is. I don't think there should be no problem if the sheriff comes and say, "Look, I'm out of money." It's going to be the budget committee that turns them to allocating, to give them money.
Y'all free to do it, I'm just throwing that out there.
That's what they're trying to do.
I prefer last thing, you know, the number of years for any account.
I have a concern I'd like to ask the sheriff. Sheriff, if I understand the process correctly, when that fund runs out of money, it's going to delay the time in which you can pay your service record right there.
Yes.
That puts in jeopardy when that you get responses during the night, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I say we leave the one seventy-five alone. My vote.
We've got a vote on this.
I understand.
As amended. And if it doesn't pass, then it reverts back to it.
I would just like everybody to consider that it's very hard to come up with an accurate budget when we don't know what they actually need, an actual number.
Alright. Everybody will say we have it, leave that on the floor. Go ahead, Ms. Dana.
Okay, when, then that line item for the tow ends, when it gets down to a hundred and seventy-five, then you need to.
They need to come and ask for more before it got passed.
Yeah, before it got passed back, and that's the way that the budget committee will know what they need to put in.
Be aware that some of these tow bills would be excess of three thousand dollars for larger stuff, okay? I'm going to fire the department for thirteen years.
It's going to take a vote.
Sunny Hall?
Rose.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
No.
Rochelle Hill?
No.
Janet Picken?
No.
Roseanne Ward?
No.
Daryl Leaks? Ronnie Hopper?
No.
Mary Powers?
No.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
No.
Playa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
No.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
And what should change your vote? Six yes and nine no.
Motion fails, stays the same. Now we're back to the original. On the target. Resolution budget fund, I want to ask you to, to all have a motion, leave a motion to. Period. Have a motion. We had a motion, we.
We're voting on the amendment, now we're ready to vote on the motions if they make the vote.
I'll retake it. All in favor?
Yes, you have to do that.
It was contested, you have to be roll call.
Yeah, you have to do the roll call.
I'm sorry.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Picken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
No.
Don Patton?
No.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Playa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
No.
And what should change your vote?
Motion carries. Motion line item nineteen. Resolution budget funds in the amount of one thousand within the animal shelter budget. Motion, Ms. Dana.
Second.
Second by Ms. Janet. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, and go to the period. Item twenty. Resolution to appropriate the pound limited estate left to the animal shelter, which referred back to the general fund balance at June thirtieth. And budget back within the animal shelter budget. Motion by Dana. Second by Angie. Discussion. No discussion, that's one of these roll call.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Picken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Playa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
And what should change your vote?
Motion carries. Item twenty-one. Resolution to appropriate fund collected throughout the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen fiscal year for the victim assistance, assistance assessment fee in the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars fifty-one cents to be remitted to the women risk resource assistant program.
Motion.
Have a motion by. Patton?
Second.
Hill?
Second, Ms. Rochelle Hill. Any discussion?
This is new money.
This is new money. No discussion, roll call, Ms. Wanda.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Picken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Playa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
And what should change your vote?
Motion carries.
Can we turn heat on?
You're warm up there, babe. Where can you hit it? Y'all hit it out there.
Three, three, four, either one.
Alright. Item twenty-two. Resolution appropriate fund collected throughout the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen fiscal year from the drug court fee in the amount of four thousand seven hundred ninety-five. Well, says remitted to the state of Tennessee.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Dana?
Second by Hearn.
Second by Hearn, discussion? No discussion, roll call vote, Ms. Wanda.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Picken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Playa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
And what should change their vote?
Motion carries. Item twenty-three. Resolution to appropriate the budget to remain balance of the health department tobacco grant in the amount of one thousand nine hundred eighty-eight twenty-two, that works to the general fund balance at June. Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Dana? Second by Mr. Patton. Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call vote.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Picken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Playa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
And what should change their vote?
Motion carries. Item twenty-four. Resolution to appropriate the five percent pay for performance salary increase to Benton County Health Department station employees, which the funds will be reimbursed to the county for the state. Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Dana?
Second by Powers.
Second by Powers. Any discussion? No discussions, that roll call vote.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Picken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Playa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
And what should change your vote?
carries. Item twenty-five. Resolution to appropriate the funds in the amount of two thousand eighteen dollars from courtroom security reserve in order to install two locks on the courtroom door. Motion by Dana.
Second.
Second by Norman. Discussion? Ms. Hopper?
Yes, uh, two things. Why is that? Why do we need locks on the door? They already got them on there. And number two, why are these so much?
That's a thousand dollars a lock. That's crazy.
Is this a motion to have a lock, if by car, the dedication or something?
Some of those locks are seven hundred dollars plus labor. Uh, but it'd be on the lower stairwell to protect the other areas access for the, uh, scandal. They're going to be gone there this way out, I understand it. Is that crazy?
Would you say something like, could use after they're removed?
They have to have it before they remove it. They can use it still there, well, yeah, I would think. I mean, you know, it's a lock, you can move it from a door to door.
Well, not necessarily. There are some locks you can't move. They're, one time they're installed, they're done.
And also, the courtroom security team, you know, came together and really picked out which ones was of their immediate need, you know, so. It's just isn't done on why they really thought out which ones they're going to do. You'll probably see a couple more things come up over the year too. Um, there's a couple more doors they want to do, and as they get the funding, they'll request.
And this is new money.
This is, go ahead for Hopper.
You have, go ahead, one more question. We're going to renovate the courthouse here. I'll do it then. Well, and we can do that, but again, this is courtroom money. This is set aside for this particular purpose. If they get the funds, then they make these enhancements, and that's what our engineering architects are for, to make sure that, that we don't throw away equipment in the process, you know, so, so. Are we going to, yeah, are we going to have to redo these then? Well, uh, when the courthouse finally gets that point of renovations, uh, this entire courthouse is going to be a bad system, magnetic lock type for all of our doors, but these would be locks that incorporate into the new system. And, uh, I guess you'd say it's transferable construction.
Nothing further in discussion, that's one of we have roll call votes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Picken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Playa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
And what should change their vote? Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Sheriff, can we call for a recess?
Aye.
Five minutes recess?
Uh, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Call back the board. Thank you, vice president. Motion back to line item twenty-six. Resolution appropriate funds in the amount of two thousand eighteen dollars from the courtroom security reserve.
No.
No, I'm not having, I'm sorry, forty-seven. Resolute to appropriate the funds in the amount of fifty-one thousand three hundred ninety dollars, twenty-five cents from the unassigned general fund balance in order to cover the twenty-seventh paying period instead of the usual twenty-six due to late year.
Motion. Second.
Motion, Ms. Dana, second by Angie. Any discussion?
Yes.
Discussion.
There's an easy way to fix this for any other year. I'm sorry, one day late year and it's costing us an extra fifty-one thousand dollars for this, but people need to be paid, period. They need to be paid. An easy way to fix it is we go to twen- uh.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four paydays. I'm used to the military, so mine is first and fifteenth, but I know the schools did a different thing. What was their day? Because of the reports. Can I make the motion that we change it and be paid at, well, it'll start next year, to be paid on the fifth and twenty-fourth, did you say?
Fifth and twentieth.
Fifth and twentieth?
Before you make a motion, uh, I'm very motioned to, to, to pay this mark process. But I was going to propose that beginning in the next budget year that we begin that process because you can't just move the cheese that fast, you know, I mean, when you.
Right, well, we can make it for next year.
And I would say, I would say if you didn't make your motion, make it effective July first to next budget year, but though, I know people use the tradition and all that, but, uh, and if there's a time to phase into that, so if you'll, if you make structured a motion that way, I would.
To begin July first, twenty-twenty. Because that will stop it, because, you know, we, our, our employees need paying.
So you're, you're gonna amend?
We're not amending this. I'm adding something totally different. We are going to change them being paid starting July first of twenty-twenty to being paid on the fifth and the twentieth of every month, and if the fifth falls on a holiday or a weekday, they will be paid that Friday before.
And if, and this be, this just be, if, if the payday falls on a weekend or a holiday, their employees should be paid on the last business day before the.
The fifth or the twentieth, right.
However, then I'd be best to pull what we've got and bring that next month.
I disagree with that. I would like to see the motion added to a resolution next month. That would be my vote. It was, we were gonna bring it before budget.
All right, then I'll pull it. If they're gonna do it next month, we'll do it next month.
We've already been discussing that. That's why we were, we were gonna implement that.
Okay, I'm all for doing it next month, so I'm just done next.
So, resolution twenty-six, or excuse me, the resolution fifteen.
Stay as I say.
Stay, so we're still gonna go on passage, hold on whatever.
Yes.
Ms. Roseanne?
Roseanne, district. Um, I would like to say that in the past, in the years that, that I worked up here, that's the way the pay period used to be, and the employees got together and I, I don't know how it come about through budget committee, but it was changed to what it is now to accommodate the employees rather than getting a check every two weeks instead of twice a month. I'm just saying that, you know, maybe we need to get some of their input. I think it would, I would shut down.
This would help the budget committee because every four years we could come up with this and be stopped.
What you do is you plan for that. You know it's gonna be leap year. You planned before.
They should have, but new people in there, they didn't think about it.
Well, I'd just like to maybe get some input from them, see how they look.
They gotta.
Cheryl, you had your hand up. Cheryl, some further?
I was pretty much going to, uh, say pretty much the same thing, is that this decision would affect a lot of employees and rather than just make an ad hoc decision, I think a little more research and at least giving all the employees of the county a bit of a voice would be fair.
Okay.
Yes.
The financial policy for the county is set by me. We don't have to go through the county committee for that. I can set the pay period at two per month, how I please. Y'all appropriate the money and I can actually set the policy for how we pay. I think it's smart business that we pay twice a month. I, I believe it's less costly in the end to pay twice a month. Uh, we're gonna see direct deposit incorporated over time, but not, not immediately, not immediately. And I think that so long as we do advance notice to the employees, because I don't know that this is coming.
Give them chances to.
Give them multiple months. I'm glad we're discussing this because this was something I was gonna bring up, but honestly, for the efficiency of operating the accounting and payroll and the processes and the time that goes in and cutting checks and all that, I'm strongly gonna move towards the two per month payroll period and it makes budgeting a lot easier, but of course, you know me, I'm all about discussion and we will discuss this thoroughly.
I'm glad, Madam, for the initial appropriate amount. That's what we're gonna have. No discussion. Roll call vote.
Sonny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yes.
That title may have grown there.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Kern?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Leah Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries.
Motion carries. Line item twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we have no notaries to suggest. So, it moves us out of twenty-eight, moves us to twenty-nine to any other digits. Saying that, that moves us into.
Neither.
I do motion to amend the rules of order.
Motion.
Couple of motions, okay? Second by Roseanne. Any discussion?
What's the, what's the motion for? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Suspend the rule of order.
Sixteen to eighteen.
amend the rule.
Are you doing this or rule of order?
Rule of order.
Suspend the rule of order. All right, the next resolution.
There's a, uh, rule of order, or motion to rule of order on it. Did the vote go out? All in favor?
Aye.
I have it on those. Resolution sixteen. Initial resolution of authorizing the issuance of not to exceed eight million dollars. It's actually been changed to six thousand, or six million.
Stand by.
General obligation level improvement on the bid and tax. I'm gonna let Mr. Mayor.
Neither.
So we gotta get a motion to give it on the floor?
Motion, Frazier?
Second, Hearn.
Come.
To give it on the floor.
Chair, motion? Uh, it's come to my knowledge that we're only dealing with a little over five million. I'd like to amend anything that says eight million dollars to six million dollars on this bond reading. So anywhere it says eight million, we need to change that to six. Mayor, is that good?
I second that.
No, I, I'm fine with that. I think the way that originated was that was an all encompassing of all projects and, and the eight million was to guarantee, it was basically a sign that the county could assure all projects being completed. But I understand the concerns and I understand, uh, we've, we've got money coming from other directions on this, so I'm, I'm, I'm fine with your amendment. Thank you.
Any further discussion on that issue? If not, then roll call.
Sonny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Kern?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Leah Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Resolution number seventeen.
No.
No.
That was amended. Now we gotta vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please hit the others, man.
Are we on resolution seventeen?
Still on fifteen.
Um.
Who you vote?
I very much support the mayor's plans and what he's planning to do, and he said earlier tonight that a lot of this is not set in stone. Um, I am all for the farmer's market. I am for having an EMA center, but the sheriff is an elected official and he has said that he does not want nine-one-one dispatch being moved. He feels that it would be detrimental to him providing services to the citizens and I would like to see a scaled down EMA center and a solid waste department recycling center put next to it because I think recycling is gonna impact the quality of life very much in this county. So I know you said this was not set in stone. I fully support your vision and where you're going, but I feel that there is area for discussion on, on some of these plans.
What we're doing, we're building an emergency operations center. Built for dispatch. Should get moved there one day. That's a different discussion, a different agreement. Uh, right, right now, we're building a building, the house, E nine-one-one and all of their components because as our architect and engineer have, have seen firsthand, the building that they are currently in is not continuing to house over six hundred thousand dollars in emergency communication equipment. We applied for a block grant to, to build an EOC. The dispatch is a completely different argument, as I will say, every single party I've spoken to is in support of dispatch. We committed to the community development block grant based on the fact that sheriff has supported that in the beginning. However, the sheriff has changed his mind and we respect that, and right now, the construction of an EOC will not encompass a dispatch unless it is agreed upon by the sheriff and the proper parties, you know, so we're not. Right now, we're building an, an EOC to house the emergency communication equipment.
Thank you, sir.
I need to put back, we gotta hit it for Cheryl. Let's, let me go back and finish the resolution we was all saying. We need to, as an amendment, we need a motion, first or second.
I'm sorry, so we've done.
We gotta hit it. By the, the feet right there. Back to six.
All right, motion.
Have a motion there. By Ms. Hearn, second by Ms. Dana. All in favor?
Okay.
We'll sit down and roll call.
Then we're voting.
Well, it is.
We're voting to change now. We vote.
You done voting on that, but.
We're voting to change. Yes, now we're voting as a.
Sonny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Kern?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Leah Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. That's motion to the resolution seventeen. drafted by the Benton County Mayor, President of the Tennessee State Department of Reference. Much convenient resolution authorizing the issue of a general obligation level improvement bond for Benton County.
Motion.
The motion, the, have a motion.
Hearn.
Second by Hearn. Discussion.
Again. Motion to amend anything on this resolution from the eight million to six million also. Uh, I have some other amendments. Do I present them at one time or do I do them individually? That I'd like to suggest. Blow them all together?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna go with everything from eight to six on this. On line item, we'll call it I. Municipal advisor. I want to word that differently on I. Okay, just say municipal advisor, I want to say for the bonds authorized herein means to be determined by county mayor prior to December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen.
Where's that at? On the second page.
Section, under section two.
Well, there's I's all over placed in there.
Second page. I and R are the same.
So, you know, authorized herein means, in parentheses, to be determined by county mayor prior to December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen. Instead of using the guardian advisor, I want it to say county mayor prior to December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen.
December?
Yes. Excuse me?
Do you have that written?
Yes, I have this in right, right.
Mayor, would you not explain why we're doing this? That would.
All right, now I've got another amendment on J. This addition to the resolution. County mayor is hereby authorized to prepare and review requests for po- prepare and review requests for proposals for municipal advisory services and bond underwriting services.
Is that, uh, J right underneath that?
This is my, this is a new J. This is a new line item J.
Oh, J painted.
We got J already.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna reposition this in as J and then we're gonna re-label K.
Are we getting rid of the one J and it's becoming that J?
I'm turning this to, and I'm presenting this as a new J. And I'll present this to Wanda in right.
Okay, make sure I understand you're striking J completely.
J, I have a new J. I'm moving our existing J to K.
I would. Just leave the J.
And K will be L. Yes.
That's like he's struck a new J. Do not mean.
I am. Well, I want it to move. All right. All right, again.
Say it more times.
My, my, the new J. County mayor is hereby authorized to prepare and review requests for proposals for municipal advisory services and bond underwriting services. And then I would like to move the existing J to K.
You're changing J to K, is that right?
That's right.
Okay.
And then K will go to L. Have I answered everybody's questions on this?
K.
The adopted mayor. Would you like to see what I've proposed? I think I understand, but you're basically, you're changing line. I. I, and you're inserting a new line as J and then, uh, the rest of it will sub, it will be numbered as K and L. That's the right way to word that. I'd like a motion that we take to this for next month, bring it in new language to bring it back for review at that time.
I second that.
The, the, what this does, after discussing with multiple people today, this is allowing, the bond terms are really standardized bond terms with the exception of who will be the, uh, municipal advisor. Now, we know we have a financial advisor that in the past has served as our municipal advisor. Uh, many of you know him as Mr. Steve Banks. And, but what this does, this allows the mayor's office some flexibility to go out there and vet different municipal advisors. Today, I had a discussion with, with an entity, uh, called TML, uh, who makes loans to counties and cities. That, there are one aspect of that. There are, there are multiple folks who can serve as our municipal advisor, and just like anything, if, if we make that process competitive, it can save us in, in fees and, and cost and also allow us a little bit of time to discuss this uh, as to who we want going forward as a municipal advisor, but that's the, that's the only, uh, thing in that that is, uh, would be a non-standard, prototypical, uh, bond term that you would have. I think I went over it with, with Commissioner Frazier. It was a concern of his. We went through it. Everything else is pretty standard language. Uh, there's a process of this and this is simply the second process. The meeting, if, if, if you pass one, the second one is supportive of that.
What this does, it puts it back in full management of the commissioners and the mayor. It's left under the finance advisor, as best I understand. He was gonna go out and sell the bonds, part of them will want to give it. It takes, it rebates from that. It puts it back that we're gonna go out on a turn market and find it. Like TML gives him opportunity. He gonna be the, the finance advisor to get us the best deal out there in the money market, so it's, it's really all we're changing. So it's, it's really all we're changing. It is stopping Bates from being the, the advisor, is putting it in the hand back to the mayor, to the commissioners. That you'll have the choice when you gonna send your bonds.
You just make.
If I'm that first Tennessee bank, the bank of America. We're gonna put my raise back in.
I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm still talking, I'm getting there. Go ahead.
I was, I was.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Regimen and just commissioner were speaking without raising his hand. It calls on speak. So, I, I see no reason to, um, to not vote on this resolution tonight just because of this three, um, three items. I mean, it's been, uh, explained what it is, so why wait another month to vote?
And the bond terms are pretty, pretty standard and straightforward in the sense it says we will have a municipal advisor, we will have legal counsel. We will offer this, uh, through a process before we actually issue bond. And it was very standardized term. Uh, I would prefer to, uh, Mr. Hefto, I think you've seen this a lot of times and all that. Did you see anything in that language that was being out of the order?
No, it's, it, again, by statute, by, well, not statute, I guess, but almost everybody that is a municipal advisor or an underwriter uses exactly the same language. So the only thing that you've done is you've given the mayor, and I guess whoever he selects to use to, to help review this, to go out and find out if there are other people who provide the same services, but who might be in a position to save money for the county in this issue.
Maybe that's all that was structured differently than what it is. It's, it's given us a better opportunity to get a better choice and a motive. Before, I said, hey, hand it off, now it's actually taking it from Mr. Bates, the way I believe it, that it comes back to the mayor and then he can report to the commissioner the best choice out there for the money. So it's just being smart.
It just means he has to.
I'm not saying to be or putting out, say we can get better rates. I'm saying this should have been done before this resolution was brought, there's too many amendments to be made to it. Get it correct, bring it back next month, that's the only thing, and that was what I, nobody lost, it postponed until that time.
And I seconded, so we have to vote.
We have a motion to have a second. We'll take a vote on it, either to the meeting or either the, the vote.
What said, I, I.
Mr. Earn.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
It's a pretty thick resolution. I don't know about the rest of them, but I'd like to have it down in the study before I vote on it.
I have a motion.
Chair, have we cleared my amendments to be voted on?
Yes, sir. No, no, we need to back, we need to start that.
I second you.
You did second.
But the table was.
There's a table to trumpet.
Table, table. Fill up and you did not.
Now, for first, we had.
You get a. Table.
They're talking.
What are we voting on here?
Voting for tableing first.
We're voting on the tableing or not the tableing.
The next month, so we can all, we can get a copy of it, correct it. Because, you know, there's a lot of corrections in it. And give everybody time enough to read it.
And I will also say.
The twenty pages or more of it.
I will also say that those that are, were around who passed the capital bond back in two thousand fifteen, this is the exact same thing that you passed at that time, which I think many of you were here. But I would also add that this actually gives us a choice in who we have as municipal advisor. And so personally, I think the amendments were spot on. I don't know how you can improve it, any better, but that's up to you. But again, this isn't something that you have not voted on, many of you have not voted on before.
One thing I do like, we've, we've got the engineer here to, to ask any of your questions, if you have anything to say what is here. I didn't make that scene, come back to me, if need. Go ahead, we're gonna take a vote.
Chair, if we're taking a vote to table because of amendments, we have to put the amendments on file first.
Right, because then we table it, we're just voting to table the res- resolution.
I saw, that's what we're doing, we done got that on file, haven't won it.
We haven't voted on his amendments yet.
We voted on the amendments.
We need to pass his amendments, then we vote to table it as amended, and that way we can come back.
Let's go back and, let's, let's clear yourself, right, let's go back and vote. As the meeting.
Yes, we need to vote on his amendments.
Do I have a vote? You're not having a vote.
And Earn seconded, so we vote on the.
On the roll call. We're going back to the amendments, the page, so we're going to vote on.
What he wants, that, that he wants to say.
Alright, let's go have a roll call.
Okay, we're voting on as amended. You know, with all the marks.
Two amendments.
Sunny Hall. Bill Melton. Doug Bickers.
Yes.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Janet Keaton.
Yes.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Claudia Dye.
Yes.
Norman Frazier.
Yes.
Ward Plan.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
I do have a question. I saw the lawyer try to make a comment as we started voting, does he need to interact?
I just was, because there was a question right at the beginning of the vote, I wanted, there was a question, comments were coming up, make sure you understood you're voting just on the amendment, you're not voting.
Right.
It has amended, there was a couple commissioners asking about that, and I'm glad we made it to the main vote. Yes, we voted, we voted two amendments.
So that, that motion, here, just to amend to the back. Now, we're going back to. Sir, Stella. We're gonna take a vote on postpone it. Want to postpone it?
Yes, it's the postpone, no, it's not the postpone.
Right. That's one, everybody understands.
Well, we postponed it or not.
Right. Yes, it's postponed and no, we need to go, bring, bring it back up, vote.
Sunny Hall. Bill Melton.
Yes.
Doug Bickers.
No.
Rochelle Hill.
No.
Janet Keaton.
No.
Roseanne Ward.
No.
Ronnie Hopper.
No.
Mary Powers.
No.
Angie Hearn.
No.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
No.
Claudia Dye.
No.
Norman Frazier.
No.
Ward Plan.
No.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
We have to vote.
Do you have to do a motion to vote?
It's motion, it's very general, it's very dramatic.
No, we have to vote.
Yeah, that's what we need, vote. Now, we're gonna come in. As amended, and vote on it, as amended. Yes, can.
Can never quietly speak, but for management.
Please, somebody, just one minute.
I'll have to ask the commission what they'd like to, anybody like to have any objection to this, they. No objection, go ahead.
I would like to ask the county attorney, uh, Mr. Johnson, they approved an eight million dollar bond issued two years ago. Now, they've made amendments to that, do they not need to go and rescind that resolution from two years ago? Because what was voted on by some of these commissioners here was to approve an eight million dollar bond issue. Okay, don't you have to rescind that? Cause they're amending this resolution.
Uh, where, well, I wasn't there many years ago, but I'm here, prior one, I understood this is amending, amending resolution before it was being voted on, not changing a prior one.
Yeah.
This was a new resolution, like it was being amended and voted on. Has nothing to do with it, this was a new resolution.
Well, J.
Not changing a prior one for two years.
Okay, this same resolution was presented, voted on, is that not correct?
The original resolution was a five million dollar capital improvement plan. So, in a way, this allows excess of the five million capital, so it's kinda like an amendment, I, I guess, a process, which is, which is a lack. You know, they, they can.
You don't have to rescind that previous one.
But the original one did not commit them to the higher amount, so, so easier to go from up than it is to go down.
I was gonna say, reading last time, I thought it was.
The original part of the five-year plan, it's been tough to that, it's necessary. It didn't set that as a, as a amount to be stamped or not even stand as part of a five-year plan. I don't think that one would be affected by that.
I just wanna make sure. Thank you, Ms. Cal. Alright. This, this here is the vote, yes, pass this resolution.
As amended.
As amended. We have roll call, everybody understands what we're calling. Yes, will be passed it, no, will be done. We have a roll call.
Sunny Hall.
Yes.
Bill Melton.
Yes.
Doug Bickers.
Absolutely, yes.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Janet Keaton.
Yes.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers, yes. Angie Hearn, yes. Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
No.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Claudia Dye.
Yes.
Norman Frazier.
Yes.
Ward Plan.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Have. Well, yes, one, no, say pass.
Motion carries, resolution passed. Thank y'all. This is thousand resolution number eighteen. There's a vacancy on the Benton County Board of Public Utilities. There's the recommendation of the county mayor to appoint Ward Plan to fulfill this vacancy, to bench the term of Bradley Blackwood, which is set to expire July one, twenty twenty. Is it motion?
Motion.
Secretary, secretary, copper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, for high screen. Motion carries.
Chair.
They're talking, you like to say the.
I just got one question, the mayor. The, uh, E nine-one-one, or the nine-one-one, is like a center. Sheriff's not gonna have any control over that after we move her. That is, we're getting a pretty big building, a building for E nine-one-one and E T M A. Of course, we're going to, with thought that, that this county needs a central dispatch. I'm gonna promote a central dispatch, we need a central dispatch, but I'm just one, many forces. Sheriff has an opinion on that, of course. But, but one day, we'll go to a central dispatch and compliment you. And, uh, the meaning of this, whether we do or whether we don't, the building is still a vital component in this community and emergency services in this county. And the central dispatch is completely different, but we did call it that, so we're excited that we can take it.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to bring up, now, I'd like to bring up another thing else, probably. We need to keep Bill Key and Gary Fur in our place. Gary Fur was in here tonight, and look, he's in here, and he's in the hospital, that's a, pretty serious issues, I'm glad they're doing some studies. Let's get him up for your friend, and carry a test and have. Then again, I should say a prayer tonight for both of them, for the commissioners, and we need to have them in a box. It goes out.
This is kind of side point, because there's a lot of, but, um, and this has nothing to do with the plan, I think you're in like a, a good board member of the electric system, but somebody explained to me how there can be two commissioners on the board. Did county commissioners sign in for it?
Uh, well, first of all, the law only says that there shall be one at least, but that isn't at least, and it's so the people of the county are represented. I could put five people on that board, I would, would like. The appointment to that board is not privileged. And, uh, I know Mr. Barnes is in the audience here, but Mr. Barnes doesn't really work for the electric company. He works for the board of these public utilities, he represents the board and their wishes. The board represents the people of Bigga County's wishes. So, uh, I've seen, uh, I've been so on the chairman and plan for a long time on that. He's got a lot of background with public utilities, he has done an excellent job when it comes to Benton Potato Sewer District, I think he has a great understanding. And, and, and honestly, I think the, um, uh, the electric company has kinda been the dog, the tail wagging the dog. And, uh, my intent is for that board to reestablish itself as the controlling board of that electric company. And so, as long as I'm mayor, that's what they can expect.
Well, I have, um, no question about Mr. Plan serving well on the board, I just, over the years, I thought it's gonna be one commissioner serving.
Well, I guess you could say, back when Mr. Sunny Hall served, he served at the same time as Mr. Blanks served, there were two commissioners on that board at that time as well. And, um, and, and he's only filling a, a position up until Ju- July first. And Mr. Barnes, represent county may.
I appreciate y'all giving United County's speak here. And let me just preface all this, I'll say, I consider that Mr. Plant, friend mine, um, I just think I feel a miss by that progress of mission, how the electric system and the rules that it operates on. In nineteen forty, they were in the regular P A, to be the wholesale supplier of electricity, and to buy by the rules and regulations of that contract. Also, thank you for passing the resolution to operate under the Municipal Electric Plan Act nineteen thirty-five, which I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, you've read that under top seven, fifty-two, one oh eight, on how the makeup of the board is paid. And they would pay two or four members of boards with the chief executive, one A representative from the governing body, it says A representative. So I just feel like I'm doing my job to make you aware of what the Plan Act is. And our term, Mr. Whitmore, feels like you've been violating the Plan Act by putting two people on there. Now, when Commissioner Plant was on there before, and he and I talked about this, and he was running for commission, he said, oh, I'm not gonna be elected, which, he got elected, and he was, he was on the board before he got elected to commission. And so, at the time of the discussion, since he was already on there, I think he's on there. But to stay in compliant with the Plan Act, when his term expired, since Sunny was already on there, as the representative, uh, from the governing body, like it's proud of him now. And I think she agrees, we're doing more than thanks, and having this discussion, so. I'm not, I'm not trying to influence you one way or the other, I'm just trying to make you aware of what the Plan Act says. And if that's, you know, if that's what you wanna do, that's fine with me. I just, I just think it's my job to make you aware that the county has already adopted a resolution to buy by the Municipal Electric Plan Act of nineteen thirty-five, which is under T C A, top seven.
And, and my interpretation of it at, at that time was they just wanted to ensure that they at least had one person, at least, but they not limited to.
My version, it doesn't say.
Well, I look forward to your challenge in the court of law.
I'm gonna let this man, she likes to say she's ready.
Okay, big thanks, Karen, let's have, um, Mr. Barnes read, uh, front of law, so that everybody can hear what the language act is saying.
Oh, yeah, I got it, I agree with what it says.
Yes, just the paragraph where.
I get it, but I'm there.
Your attorney's on about that.
Uh, but under Tennessee Code Consolidated Governance, uh, Municipal Electric Plan Act nineteen thirty-five, uh, chapter seven, fifty-two, one oh eight, paragraph C, in addition to the members on, on such chief, chief executive officer, sale also, was being the mayor in our case, cause most, most want to infer the municipality of the city, Lower County on the municipal. Uh, with the consent of the governing body of the municipality, designate a member of such governing body, or in a chief executive's office of discretion, the city manager, which in our case, the city manager doesn't apply, to serve as the third or fifth member of board. That's what it said. It says A point, A member, so.
And I'm according to second. So, uh, you know, again, my interpretation would be that that's, that was to ensure that at least the government body would have a representative on there, but not limited to the one person. So, if you believe you stand a stronger challenge in your legal counsel, Mr. Whitmore, feel that your position is stronger than mine, then I welcome the opportunity for you to challenge it. But right now, I appoint the board of public utilities. I am appointing Ward Plan to the board of public utility. You and your legal counsel are more than welcome to challenge that if you want. But, like I said, I'm not a lawyer, haven't been to law school, uh, but I do believe I have a good interpretation of what the intent of that law was. And the intent of that law was to at least have a member from this representative body. And the intent of that law was to at least have a member from this represented body on the electric board. I do not believe the intent of that law was to limit this body from participation on that board. Again, that, that's subject to the court of law, and you're more than welcome to challenge it, but, uh, it's, to me, you're not, it's, the argument is not gonna go anywhere with me. I'm going, if it's not Ward Plan, I'll appoint Mr. Kenneth Miller and Ms. Ford, uh, on that board, but, but the commission is gonna have an additional member on that board.
Okay, sounds good. I just wanna make you aware of what's lying there. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff, you asked to speak earlier. Do you still need to speak, boys, or?
It, it's pretty much what we went over already, uh, when we got back well on the hundred and seventy-five dollar tow bill thing. I don't wanna waste another hour on that. Basically, back on the same money that we saw a flat down, as we would say, reimbursed or as new. I believe, uh, I believe we covered that. I think we have. All those months that we involved in that, including seventeen thousand four hundred dollars that is reimbursed to the sheriff's office for SRO. We paid out, and the school pays us back for that. It comes out of our budget, and they just reimburse it for what they're standing on, the school is on it.
Thank you. Anything further? Anybody have any other comment? Yes, I have a motion. Need a second? Any?
Miller.
Justice, that's fine.